Good afternoon and welcome to this special meeting of the Arts, Parks and Neighborhoods Committee. Today is December 14th, 2011, and it's now 2:07 PM. I'm Paul Krikorian, Chair of the Committee. I understand that Mr. Weston and Mr. Reyes are otherwise engaged today, but we're going to be proceeding with the hearing on two items. And hopefully, this will be relatively brief. If you would like to speak on either of the agenda items or offer general public comment, please fill out one of these white cards. We will be taking general public comment as we always do after the agendized items. And with that, I think we can proceed to Agenda Item One.
Item number one, continued from November 3rd, 2011. City Attorney and City Clerk reports an ordinance relative to amending Sections 20.36 and 22.816 of Los Angeles Administrative Code relating to Neighborhood Council Elections.
All right. And if I could ask Mr. Kim to come up and Ms. Lagmay to come up, please. So just to recap where we are here, because there was quite a bit of confusion, I think, about that at our last meeting and in the time leading up to our meeting. The state, the lay of the land right now is that the clerk is stuck in the position of having the authority, sole authority, to administer elections for neighborhood councils and no funding to do so, because we have defunded that operation. And so, the, I think that the concern was that that would lead to the inevitable result, although this was not something that the council had instructed or mandated, but the inevitable result of that would be that if the clerk had sole authority to do elections but couldn't fund it, then that would mean, therefore, that elections would not take place at all and would have to be postponed until 2014, which would leave people in their position. And I think it's the consensus view, if I may, that the better result would be to, at least as the clerk continues to work on soliciting input on the survey about what an appropriate permanent solution would be, that at least temporarily, this situation is not acceptable to have one department that has sole authority but no funding. So I think the proposal that, where we should go from here, would be to move forward with instructing the city attorney to draft an ordinance that would fix that problem by relieving the clerk of that authority for the 2012 election cycle only, allowing that responsibility to fall to Dunn. And then, in, as we're working through that election cycle, continue to gather the input pursuant to the survey and keep our heads together for a more comprehensive, longer-term solution. And I just wanted to hear from both of you, first of all, on that concept and whether that is a workable concept, whether you think it's an appropriate way to go just to deal with this short-term challenge as we continue to strive to figure out the longer-term permanent solution.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that succinct and powerful report, Ms. Lagmay. And passionately held, I could tell.
That was June Lagmay, City Clerk, for the record.
This is Bangwan Kim, General Manager for Neighborhood Empowerment. And yes, I agree and support the direction that you're heading in, Mr. Chair. There is a slight caveat regarding our ability to manage elections for the next fiscal year, and that would be the budget and having adequate resources. So I anticipate that the question of how much funding would be available for the department to administer elections would be considered as part of the city council's budget deliberations. There are some funds in our budget currently that we could use to start planning, but if you were to pass that recommendation, if council were sitting that direction, that would allow us to start planning now so that we could more or less hit the ground running going into the next fiscal year, and that's how I would approach it. But it is, it is going to be important for us to be given enough resources, and I know that is going to be the challenge for, given the fiscal crisis. But, you know, I'll give you a brief summary of what we included in our budget proposal to the mayor, because the mayor did ask us to put in a budget package for the elections. And we're proposing a very streamlined election procedure. We understand that we're not going to be able to fund neighborhood council elections anywhere near the level that we did in prior years due to the fiscal crisis. So we're approaching this relying largely on temporary workforce so that we can minimize the fiscal burden to the city. So that's our approach going into the budget hearings. But I would request that we get support for council to do, get enough adequate resources to do a professional job.
Yeah. And along those lines, if, if we pursue this strategy of the 20, for the 2012 cycle, drafting such an ordinance to change that exclusive authority for this cycle doesn't imply that there will be any particular, we're not presupposing how you will end up implementing those elections or what the, what level of outreach there will be or what role individual neighborhood councils will have in selecting a particular process or not. We're not suggesting any ways in which the election will actually be implemented, just transferring the authority at this point. And then at a future point, Mr. Kim, I want to ask you to come back here with a more concrete list of recommendations on this is how you would anticipate moving forward, this would be the budgetary constraints that you would be operating under, what you would be able to do and not do with particular, and we'll want to have that, leave that discussion for another day after you've had the opportunity to develop an implementation plan.
Yes, understood.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you both, and I think what I'd like to do is hear from the public on item one now. We've got a number of cards. And our first speaker on item one will be Frank Wada, followed by Valerie Keegan. And we'll, we'll do two minutes per speaker.
My name is Frank Wada. I'm a Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council Treasurer. Been the election chair for the last several elections. I've been doing, I've been on the election committee from the very beginning, so I've seen the different methods that they've, you know, used throughout the, you know, the process of elections. I've been through IEAs, the independent, I've done selection from, we were at the very beginning, and I was one of the pilots' councils when they did it through the city clerk. So I've had quite a number of experiences. Prior to your just statement that we're going to go on with a type of election process, I was going to go against the ordinance that was transferring the powers and also saying that, you know, we were going to delay. My council officially has put in position that they were going to delay their position, but my own personal opinion is that we should not, because the election is such an important part of the democratic process. My concern was also with, if we were going to delay, how is the city attorney going to do with our particular council in terms of, we have a split in terms of, half the council is going to go on half every cycle every other year? So I wanted to know how that was going to be implemented. But other than your current position right now, I think it will be satisfied.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wada. Our next speaker is Valerie Keegan, followed by Aida Talala.
Good afternoon. My name is Valerie Keegan. I am with the Hollywood Hills West Neighborhood Council. I do apologize in advance for not attending all these meetings before, but I chair emergency services, and in Hollywood, we've been very, very busy. Thank you so much for proposing to go forward with these neighborhood council elections. I think that not having a neighborhood council election sort of sends that message that we don't count. You know, we are volunteers. I put in almost 60 hours a week into this neighborhood council. Like I said, emergency services is busy, but it also dilutes the credibility of the neighborhood council. And as we continue to seek participation and try to get people involved, for us to send off that message to say, gee, we don't have the budget, so therefore, we're just in for another two years. Our neighborhood council, Hollywood Hills West, is a board of 23. This will wreak havoc. We will have resignations, we will have open seats. We, in our neighborhood council, we, it used to be 60 days that the seat was open, posted as open. It's now, our bylaws have changed, to be open for 30 days. That potentially leaves almost 12 seats unseated. I mean, we have then nobody. Please, go forward. We did use an IEA in the previous elections, before the city clerk took over. We actually did a really good job. We had a better voter turnout than we did with the city clerk's office. It was really grassroots, and we got people out there. We had two different voting locations. Our neighborhood council, the geographic area is very, very large, but we were able to handle that. Our neighborhood council, we have already discussed, we did vote to say, please continue with the neighborhood councils. We do have some extra money that we're trying to set aside right now. If we can do this quickly, we can possibly propose to the councils to say, put aside, you know, whatever isn't set, thousands of dollars. So, thank you very much. Please, help us.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker is Aida Talala, followed by Charles Lindenblatt. Good afternoon.
Thank you. I have voted in neighborhood council elections since 2004, and I've been through various systems that were supposedly improving. I also had the dubious experience of running against a dead candidate and having that dead candidate win. How that happened, I think Dunn could not answer that. I am very skeptical about neighborhood council elections, whether they're run by the city clerk or Dunn or by the neighborhood councils themselves. The system is flawed, and I think that it needs to be looked at much more clearly and rather than just being pushed through. I also think that the pool, the input pool, is far too small. You see the same people coming in, you don't see people at neighborhood council meetings. Then who are you voting for? What are you voting for? What system is out there serving your community? I really think that some neighborhood councils have ended their lifespan, and that option needs to be put on the ballot as a referendum or whatever you call it, because there is no grievance process. There is nothing. Furthermore, the neighborhood council system is designed to uphold just the neighborhood councils and nothing else. Stakeholders don't count. This is an aberration. Is that it? Is that the word? I really think that greater thought needs to be put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Lindenblatt, followed by Dr. Tom Williams.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. My name is Charles Lindenblatt. I'm with the Mid-City West Community Council. I am the, I was the 2008 and 2010 Election Committee Chair, but I'm speaking here only for myself. I would echo what, to some extent, what Frank said. I've been involved with my neighborhood council since prior to certification, and I've seen how the various election systems, processes have worked. And we were also one of the, one of the pilot program, part of the pilot program with the city clerk in 2008 and in 2010. And I, I would still, I'm advised that, or encourage that, if possible, that the, that the elections could remain with the city clerk and sort of amend it, don't end it, because we have a situation now where, well, in the early years when we ran our own elections, we, with the IEAs, we had half the board up every year, and so the people who were not up for election could volunteer and work on, work on the election and everything. And now, since with the change over, our whole board, we have 45 people on our board, our whole board is up every two years, and I think it'd be kind of a difficult situation there. Also, there's a lot more division and so forth within our board, and I think that having a, really having, having outside department like the city clerk continue it the way they did it before, I think would really be the best way to do it. But if it goes back to Dunn, then I'm sure they'll have good, come up with good procedures to mitigate those problems. And so that's, that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think I saw Dr. Williams step out, so we'll come back to him and go to Ivan Spiegel.
I gave my whole patriotic speech last time about why you don't cancel elections in a democracy, so I won't repeat that. Moving forward, I'd like to support what both the city clerk and general manager said. I think we need to get on this soon before floodgates open. It's already starting in a lot of our councils. There are certain things that I think need to be included in this. It's really important to maintain the integrity of the elections. That was the one thing we got from the city clerk. There was no question that the elections were impartial. So moving forward here, and I know Dunn is aware of this, but whatever system is picked, there must be integrity, you must have independent people involved in running the elections and setting them up. I'd also like to second what, what you heard about the money. Dunn staff is up to here right now, you know? They need extra staff in order to pull this off. People think, well, why? It's the IEAs. Well, someone has to select the IEAs, someone has to train the IEAs, somebody has to certify the elections, and that has to come from Dunn. Ninety percent of the work happens before the day of the election, isn't just somebody that shows up. They're going to need extra staff to do this. The survey that was sent out, I've been to a bunch of neighborhood councils the last few weeks, people are struggling with this because there are no dollar signs attached to the choices. How can you make an informed decision if you don't know what this is going to cost us? I would ask that the city clerk send this out again and have the dollar signs attached, and then you might get the real answers. Last thing, I thank you for being here. I'm upset now, two weeks in a row, two times in a row, you've been sitting up there alone, and I shouldn't be on you for that, because you're here. Would you please send a message that this is important to a lot of constituents in the city, and maybe they should show up once in a while? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give one last opportunity for Dr. Williams, going once. No, he stepped out. Going twice, okay. That will close the public comment on this matter. Then I'd like to ask the city attorney's office to come up for a moment, and, no. You heard the comments of the departments and the comments of the public. It seems like this is a direction that would be feasible and supported by both departments. Is that, is an ordinance along the lines of what I described, transferring that authority on a temporary basis, do you, do you think that that would be workable from a legal perspective?
Absolutely feasible, yes.
Okay. And would the timing of preparing such an ordinance be such that we would still be able to, I mean, we're starting to get on a pretty tight timeframe for a 2012 election cycle, so would we be able to get that done in time to get back and approved by council and give Mr. Kim an opportunity to be able to do his work?
I'm well aware of the urgency, and we will do our best to try to make sure that the, an additional amendment to the ordinance is prepared.
Excellent. Now, as a matter of process, I'm sorry, I don't even know the answer to this. Can you, can my recommendation as committee chair along those lines, is that sufficient to start you on it, or do we have to go to council with my recommendation and have council approve that?
Let me also talk with your staff, and then maybe we can follow up on that, and I'll see what, as well, within my office as well. So I'm not, I'm not prepared to give an answer on behalf of my full office, but I will definitely be working closely with your staff to facilitate and get this done as quickly as possible.
Because as I'm seeing it, we already have a draft ordinance. Council has already given instruction to do a draft ordinance, so we're talking about a revision to the existing draft ordinance. Can I do that with, I make that recommendation?
Essentially, how it would work here, we would, you know, really, a part of it's kind of in the hands of the attorney, whether, I've had other committee experience where they just simply do an ordinance, really don't wait to be formally told, do it, and hand it off. The more formal process would be, I'd have to, you know, send a recommendation to be a communication. Earliest would be January 3rd, I could get it for. They could take it up, basically, tell them, prepare, present. Doesn't mean that, you know, if your higher-ups say, go for it, you could be working on it in the meantime.
Correct.
It would come back to us, technically be referred back to committee at that point to speed things up. You could simply waive the matter, and we could send it directly to council. That would probably be the cleanest way.
Then, I'm going to do both things. I'm going to say that it's the chair's recommendation, and the chair's hope that, working closely with the city attorney's office, we can expedite this process beginning now rather than waiting until we return. At the same time, I'm going to recommend that the council instruct the city attorney to draft an ordinance along what I've described, and hopefully, by the time the council makes that instruction, we will have been well on our way to already completing it. So when, when that comes back, then I will waive it out of committee right now. So we'll just go ahead and agendize it for council so that when the ordinance comes back, we're ready to roll in council. Does that work?
That would work.
Okay. Great.
Thanks.
Oh, wait a minute. Not so fast. Just when you thought we were going to get away clean. It's a good thing you're, you've got your back to the clerk's office, let me tell you.
I'm Mr. Chair, Paul Smith, from the CLA. Maybe the most expeditious way to handle this is ask the city attorney, too. Just to schedule, bring the ordinance before the council, have him draft a substitute at the time it comes into council, and swap them and go forward. Just agendize the ordinance. It's already before the council, right?
Correct.
You submitted it.
Version one.
Version one. Instruct him.
I want to see how it plays out. He can try that if he gets it.
If I can get it. Then we just continue.
Well, wait a minute. Wait, wait. I mean, this is, why can't I just report this draft ordinance to council with my recommendation that it be amended in council to do what I said that it should say?
And then just put it in, right.
I mean, that, that is essentially the same, same thing, I think, that we've said, except that I'm also...
Alls you want to get is before council, and then, once we get there, we can, he can previously have worked on, it's a simple application, right?
But I, I think that's, I think we're saying the same thing. My recommendation is going to be that the council approve the amended ordinance as, that's going to be prepared, so...
We've, we could also do, prepare, present, if it plays out long enough, just to play it the day, oh, look, we've already got it, we've done that before. So either way, we can make it work.
The one thing that I don't, the one thing that I want to be very clear about is that we're not recommending the ordinance as it is. And I want everybody to be clear that we're not making that recommendation. I don't want that to, anybody to get that misunderstanding, because we've been through enough of this, so...
We're just looking at the most expeditious way to move, because your timeline is shrinking.
Right.
If we can get the ordinance before and get some changes made in, you know, around what you're suggesting, so it, I think the changes aren't that significant, or that, I think that could be crafted and presented in a timely fashion.
It, well, okay.
I'll only walk up with the city clerk's office.
Yes.
I think I would recommend that you go with your original plan, because Paul's plan would work if the city attorney submitted theirs in time. If they didn't, you would still be on the same, same track. So I would respectfully recommend that you go back to your original recommendation and move this report forward. Then they can instruct the city attorney. If the city attorney, in the meantime, has submitted theirs, then we'll swap it out on the floor.
Yeah. Just move it as fast as you can.
But wait, no, actually, if we do it that way, we're going to have a new ordinance that's going to be voted on by the council. If my recommendation to the council is to instruct the city attorney to draft an ordinance rather than recommending an ordinance to them, there's nothing to swap out. There won't be an ordinance before the council to swap out. It will be in its, it will be, and then, I can't present an ordinance when all I have in their file is my report asking for permission to draft an ordinance.
Well, or permission to, well, it's to revise the exist, revise the ordinances that's in front of them, to modify it.
Right. But that, I think we're all saying the same thing. You have to get the ordinance to council in order to amend it.
Correct.
So the recommendation will be that the ordinance should be approved by council with the amendments that I've described, and to request that the city attorney prepare amendments consistent with my instructions.
Right.
Okay? Does that, does that work?
That, I think, okay.
Very good. Thank you all very much for a great collaborative effort there. Thank you. All right. Then that brings us to item number two. And before we move off of that, I said it last time, but I want to say it again. Ms. Lagmay, I especially just want to say, June?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say again, said it last time, I'm going to say it again. I think that this is a result that makes it more cost-effective and so on to work going forward, but I want to say again how much I appreciate and how much I think everyone appreciates the professionalism and, you know, really extraordinary work that the clerks off, that you and your staff have done in running the elections and also in handling this transitional process. So I want to reiterate that because it's important to note, I wish we had unlimited funds to be able to continue this, but we don't, and that, that doesn't in any way suggest that what you've done has been anything less than extraordinarily professional and very important.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to item number two. If anybody wants to speak on item number two, please fill out one of these cards.
Item number two is LA for Kids Steering Committee Report Relative to Authorizing the Release of the Eighth Cycle Proposition K. Request for Proposals On or Shortly Following January 12, 2012 and Related Matters.
All right. And who is going to be, who do we have is going to be reporting on this matter? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Brian Randall with the CLA's Office, Prop K staff. I can give an overview of the item.
Please.
Before you is a request from the LA for Kids Steering Committee to approve the release of the Eighth Cycle Proposition K, RFP, to be released on July, January 12, 2012, and also to authorize Prop K staff to make minor modifications, adjustments, corrections, and changes to the RFP. The RFP will make available for award $26.6 million in Prop K competitive funds over a three-year period from July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2016. Program staff have utilized several methods to notify the community of the RFP, including notification of 600 public agencies and nonprofits on Bureau of Engineering's mailing list, mass emails, a press release through the Department of Public Works Information Office, and also notification to all council districts, city departments, and neighborhood councils. Staff have been meeting to discuss any necessary revisions to the RFP before the final is submitted for council approval, and those revisions include locking down the dates for the required technical assistance seminars and deleting any inconsistencies and duplication of information in the RFP. in the RFP.
I'm Neil Drucker, I'm with the Bureau of Engineering Recreation and Cultural Facilities Program. I have with me David Moss. David Moss is going to be the one who actually distributes the RFP and manages the RFP process. As Brian said, there were some changes, both ongoing before we ultimately release it, as well as we've made some changes relative to this cycle for things that either didn't work in prior cycles, or to reflect current thoughts. So, one of them, as Brian said, is, in the past, we've always gone out every two years, this time, it's a three-year cycle. The positive of that is it allowed us to bring more money forward, at the same time where normally, we've gone out with about twelve to fourteen million, this time, we're going out with 26.6 million, so there's a lot more money available. We've always had the technical assistance seminars as part of our process, this time, we've made them mandatory. One of the things we've learned is the agencies that don't attend the seminars miss things, and they end up submitting what could be great projects, but because they either don't dot their i's and cross their t's properly, or they don't fully understand the magnitude of the requirements, and this is a very difficult technical process to submit a proposal under Prop K, they miss out on things. So, we've made the technical assistance seminars mandatory. They don't have to attend all four, they have to attend one of the four. We hold them all over the city, in the valley, the central district, and southern district, and then we add a fourth one, which is usually held here downtown, either at City Hall or close by. We think that helps a lot. In the past, they've gotten bonus points for attending the seminar, this time, we're saying, no, you get zero points for attending, but if you don't attend, you literally cannot submit, your proposal becomes ineligible to submit. Some of the other things that we've already changed, or are going to change, in addition to the technical assistance seminars, as Brian said, we're making sure that the document is internally consistent, there's some inconsistencies that have to be corrected, confirming the dates and times of everything, making sure those are in fact correct. One of the other things is probably our biggest applicant over the years has been the Department of Recreation and Parks, and although they are a city department, they are the only city department, other than the other proprietaries, Airport Harbor and DWP, that actually own their own property. And right now, the documents all refer to city-owned property, or city projects on city-owned property, or private projects on city-owned property, and it doesn't have a separate area for recreation and parks projects. So, we're changing it, you know, somewhat to clarify that a recreation parks project on recreation and parks land is equivalent of a city project, as they are a city department, even though it's held in their own name, it's still a city department. So, we'll make that change. And pretty much everything else is the same as prior years, there have been some changes to various city programs, such as our MBEWBE outreach program, and various, like Measure H had to be included, which is CEC Form 55, so we've added that. And anywhere else where the city requirements for contracting have changed, we're trying to incorporate those into the RFP as well.
Can you talk a little bit more about your outreach effort generally?
Sure, I'll, I'll start, and David can add. What we've done over the years, and Prop K was enacted in 1998, so we've had a little bit of experience, and this is our eighth cycle, each time we run the program, each time we send out the RFP, we confirm our mailing list, and right now, as Brian said, we have about six hundred agencies, public agencies, nonprofits. We make sure that we send a direct email, as well as a hard copy letter to each of those agencies. We do publish in the newspaper, we've used Channel 35, and we'll continue to use Channel 35 to advertise. We meet with each of the council districts, as well as Department of Recreation and Parks, and we've actually begun those meetings already, where we send out a letter through recreation parks, asking each of the council offices to identify any priority projects they have for recreation parks to apply for. We also sit down with LAUSD, Santa Monica, in fact, I met with Paul Edelman this morning from Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority, and as many agencies that we can identify who might be able to apply, and let him know about the availability of the RFP. So, I think we do a pretty good job.
Great, great, thank you. Anything else?
In addition to that, we, we send notices to neighborhood councils, to council offices, to departmental general managers, so it's an extensive outreach program.
Very good. All right, thank you. Well, and I, there's no one here to comment from the public, thank you very much, gentlemen, so it'll be my chair's recommendation to approve the LA for Kids Steering Committee request to release the RFP, and authorize Prop K staff with approval of the city attorney to make any minor modifications, adjustments, corrections, and/or changes to the RFP along the lines of those described or otherwise. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Dr. Williams, come back. He came back, and he left again. He is our only public comment card, so with that, unless there's anything that I missed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.